At this time, I'd like to welcome you to the last meeting of our regular term for this year. And at this time, I'd like to ask Pastor Michael Mathis from Mission Field Ministries if he would come and lead us in our invocation. And he will be followed by Gimi Nicole Johnson. She's a second grader at Rockfish Elementary School, and she'll come to the microphone and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. So if you will, all please rise.
I want to thank the board for allowing me to be a part of the team and everything that's taken place here in 2021. Oh Lord Jesus, oh God, Thou has always been our dwelling place in every generation before the mountains were brought forth or ever you did form the earth and the world from everlasting to everlasting. You alone are God. We thank you for your presence here. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your grace. We thank you, God, for forgiving us for all of our faults and the sins, God, that we sin first against you and then against mankind. And we thank you for your precious blood, Lord Jesus, that you shared on cavalry just for us. Oh Lord, I, we always are reminded of the fact that we should give thanks and pray for those that are in leadership over us. And God, I thank you for allowing me to be a part of the team to pray for those that are leading this great town of Hope Mills. You have done great things in 2021. It's been some ups and it's been some downs, but God, you have brought us through, and we thank you for that. And God, as we give you thanks, we're always reminded of how we should say specific prayers for our leaders. And we pray for Mayor Warner and her family and all of the board members, especially the law enforcement. We pray, God, that you would keep wearing angels around them at their back as they go out protecting all of the citizens of this town and other places. God, you're just so kind and so merciful in all your ways. And now, Lord, we know man has wisdom, but God, we call upon you for your wisdom. There's an agenda already set. You hold the king's heart in your hand. You know how to do things with us, and sometimes we don't even know why we make certain decisions we do. But God, you're in control, and God, we submit our will to you tonight. Have Thine own way, Lord, and we thank you now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, I'd like to present my second grader, who has had a lot of courage to come here tonight with a special certificate. And this is just for you, and we hope this will continue your involvement in the public office of times. There was tonight's our swearing in, so you had a nice time to sign the special certificate. Thank you. You can share this with the members. You may be seated. At this time, do we have any additions or deletions for our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve our agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. First part of our agenda this evening is official comments, and I will start to my left with Commissioner Legg, and we'll move down so everyone has an opportunity for official comments. Commissioner Legg?
Well, it's a hard thing to follow when you follow somebody like a second grader. I'm glad to see everyone out this evening that's come out to be with us. We're used to a almost empty room, but looks like the town manager opened the doors tonight. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the elections that put us up here and pray for us that we can do our best to be the kind of people that you want to be in your leadership. And for Jessie and Pat, thank you for your service.
You're welcome, Commissioner Legg.
Commissioner Marley?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and supporting this board and the incoming board members as well. Hats off to the town, great Christmas parade, tree lighting ceremony. It felt good to have a park full of people and getting back to some kind of normalcy. And I too would like to thank Commissioner Bellflowers and Ms. Edwards, Commissioner Edwards, for their service to the town, and I have truly enjoyed serving with both of you.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protiou?
I would just like to echo what everyone else has said. We had a great parade this past weekend, great weather. It was good to see everybody out. Thank you all for coming out this afternoon to support us, and a lot of you, you support us throughout the year, not just here at our swearing in, but you all support us all of the time. So I'd like to just thank you all for being here, and I'd also like to thank Commissioner Bellflowers and Pat Edwards for your service to this town. It's been a pleasure to serve with both of you.
Commissioner Edwards?
This is very emotional for me. I've been here 10 years, and I've met so many wonderful people. You've all been fantastic. I've been through several boards, and I started out about the same time Mayor Warner did, and I've really enjoyed working with her. Excuse me. John, I don't know how you do it, but anyway, I'm gonna try. I just can't, I can't express to you how much I love Hope Mills and the people in it and how much we've grown and how we're growing together and how we work together. And it's just, it's just a blessing to me and has meant so much to me, and I appreciate it, and thank you so much. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. It is touching. It is. It's been an honor and I'm humbled to have served the town for the past four years, and I appreciate everyone who's taken the time to come out tonight to the meetings, and I hope you continue coming to the meetings and support the new board. Between the two of us, it's 14 years leaving the board tonight of experience. I've got four, and Commissioner Edwards has four, has 10. And I feel like, you know, in four years that I'm leaving, I'm leaving like on bookends, because when I came in on 17, we were finishing up the dam project. And now I'm leaving on 21, and we still have the public safety facility that we're working on. So it's kinda been, it's kinda been filled with projects. I want to also say that during this, during my tenure on this board with the board previous and the board and this board here, is that we've approved the largest town budget in the town's history, and we've done that without raising property tax increase for four years. And that's my challenge to the incoming board, is to keep that going. And you can keep it going. Now, it's been the best of times, but it's been challenging times. We haven't always agreed on everything. But at the end of the day, we have each other. And you know what? That's all that you have, is each other. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And of course, my opportunity will come after our, the next opportunity that I have, and that is to recognize our delegation that is here. We have Senator Kirk Deviere that is, has arrived, and we have, did any other, just you and Representative Zoka, is that the two that's, okay. And we have Representative John Zoka here with us. Both of these gentlemen represent our district, represent Hope Mills, all of Hope Mills, and what a great job they've done this year. And I thought it was only appropriate for them to come tonight because as we approach the end of this term and start a new term, we're starting a new term with an additional funding to our budget that is gonna make things so much easier for Hope Mills with our capital improvement plan, because now we can start anew and plan for the next five or 10 years of what we want to do. So I'd like to recognize Representative John Zoka to say a few words, and Senator Deviere, if you'd like to come up and join him, I think it would be appropriate. And just know that these two men, along with the rest of our delegation, have done, well, that, you know, I am so glad you know now what you need to add to the next budget, right?
I've been trying to do that for a few years now.
But I'll turn it over to our delegation, and really and truly, this is a blessing. Our five, the five have worked together, and they have done such a good job for Cumberland County, not just Hope Mills, for Cumberland County, but I think we deserve to let them know how much we appreciate everything they've done, and these two men especially. So Representative Zoka?
Well, thank you very much for that kind introduction. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, and thank you, citizens of Hope Mills who are here tonight. We both could talk extemporaneously for hours on the budget, but we promised that we wouldn't do that tonight. But before I go into what we were able to obtain for Hope Mills in the budget, I did want to make two points. The first one is that there's no single person in the delegation who's responsible for all of this. It's all of us are responsible for all of this. Myself, Senator Deviere, Representative Richardson, Senator Clark, Representative Wheatley, Representative Lucas. And when you look at the six of us, you've got Republicans, you've got Democrats, you've got House members, you've got Senate members, and I will tell you this, is that the six of us, really, in our opinion, I think I can speak for Kirk on this, we've given this pitch enough, but we really led the state in showing the rest of the counties across the state what it means to be a delegation and how to work together for the betterment of our constituents. I, I will brag just a bit here, and I will tell you that if we had not done this, this state might not have had a budget. So it's right here in Cumberland County that your delegation, of all colors and all political persuasions, worked together for the betterment of the citizens. And the result of that was great. I want to touch on a couple things that really affect everybody in the county before we get into the Hope Mills specific. When you look at higher education, FTCC and FSU, there's a total of $198 million coming to our institutions of higher learning, $164 million plus to FSU, which is building a new college of higher education, a new residence hall, a new parking deck, $38 million for repairs and renovations. About a year ago, we were approached by members of the FSU board and were told, this is really odd, I gotta say, talking this way and talking this way too, so I'm kinda, but by members of the FSU board saying that FSU had been shorted for decades. And frankly, I said, well, people always, or sometimes say things when they want more money. We investigated it. They've been shorted for decades. This goes a long way towards making up for that, and we have more work to do there. And it was not only FSU, but the other historic black colleges and universities that received more than their fair share this time. The perennial favorites, UNC and State, they got a little bit less, but that's okay, because we're putting the money where it really belongs. FTCC, another $20 million for the training, the fire training center, which is gonna be one of a kind on the East Coast. It's gonna be amazing. $4 million for a nursing building to renovate that, and $10 million for a truck driver training facility. Every time you drive through FTCC, you see the big trucks out there outside the buildings and wonder, what are they doing? Well, they're doing it because they don't have a facility. And right now, North Carolina needs about 50,000 truck drivers. Think about that for a minute. I mean, 50,000 truck drivers, local and long haul, so this will go some way towards helping that happen. Let's zoom down to Hope Mills. We all know what's happened on East Patterson Street below the dam, and just thank God the dam is there for another 100 years, we all hope, but they've, we finally got that right. But East Patterson Street, there's a lot of erosion there, and it needs to be strengthened. That's $2.5 million to do that. One of our communities, Woodland Hills, everybody knows where that is, $650,000 so that the next hurricane or the next big rainstorm, to really handle that flooding down there and make the water go where it's supposed to go. I always say you've got good water and you've got bad water. The good water's the stuff you drink, and the bad water's the stuff that comes with hurricanes. Stormwater projects, another $350,000. And I believe, if I remember our meeting with the council, that will be more than sufficient to get the planning done for all the stormwater improvements that need to be done in Hope Mills. $680,000 for outdoor park equipment. There's two parks, which I'm sure everybody here knows about. And I talked to the mayor beforehand, and she said, we just need to put it on bid. I said, you're right. You got the plans, you got the money, let's get it done. Not quite in Hope Mills, but something that will help us, because we have so many military families with children in schools that either go to Hope Mills or right around the area. There's a commission of military, an interstate commission on military children that I actually have had the privilege of sitting on for the last 10 years, that what that does is it looks at different states, and when you move in as military family, you might have problems, because they'll teach one thing in one state, another thing in another state. Case in point, when I moved here, we moved from Fort Knox, Kentucky. In Kentucky, they taught cursive writing in fourth grade. In North Carolina, they passed it, or they taught it in third grade. So he completed third grade in Kentucky, moved here. My son should actually be a doctor based on his handwriting, because he never did learn cursive writing, but that's the type of things we get into, and it's even more important when you get into high school equivalency and stuff. So the fact of the matter is, there's two slots for military family counselors in K-12, which will really get into the schools even more than folks do now, and help those kids adjust. I know a lot of us have ties out in Hall, in Graves Creek. Anybody's played travel ball or some of the other balls. Hall Park, I think everybody's been to a game out there. There's $30,000 to upgrade Hall Park and do the, I'm just gonna make one other comment, and then Kirk, I'll hand it over to you if you want to highlight something else. And that is, we are in a military community. I'm retired military. Kirk served for 10 years in the military, and I know that we have a lot of veterans here. I've seen all your airborne wings, and I was never a master blaster, just regular parachutes. So don't hold that against me, but, but one thing that I've been working on for quite some time is to make North Carol, military retirement pay exempt from North Carolina income tax. Working on that a long time. It was in this budget, and it takes effect this year. And I will tell you that right now, the two people responsible for that, us two right here. I got it through the House. I got it through the House, Kirk got it through the Senate. Kirk, you wanna highlight anything?
Thanks, John. I think you covered it, but Mayor and Commission, I just want to tell you that your delegation went to work for you this time. And John's exactly right, you know, we didn't, we weren't looking at political parties, we weren't looking at ideologies, we weren't looking at color. We were looking at how we could best affect the citizens in our state and the citizens in our community. And for far too long, this county, this community, Hope Mills, had got shortchanged, and we corrected that, and we're gonna continue to correct it. Unfortunately, I'm losing one of my wingman here, because he chose to go do something else. But, but you've got a delegation that works for you, so what I want you to take away from is $412 million back to this community, and really deserves more, because it's been underfunded for many years. And Mayor, I know your husband can appreciate it, because he knows how hard it is to, to work things up there, especially when you do it in a bipartisan, as well as both the Senate and the House working together. So just know you've got a delegation that cares about the people of this county. So thank you.
And, and I would like for the members of the military retired and, and current active duty, would you please stand? Those that are in the, that were, have retired or been in the military? I, I think you see how important that bill was to Hope Mills. No matter what anyone says, our increase in population, just like what you saw in here, looks about, about half of us are some way been attacked, either are involved in the military currently, or we're retired military. So just know, we appreciate everything you've done for Hope Mills, but especially for our military too. So we know that we, Kirk, you'll be back, we're gonna strive real hard to help you get there, and we know that, John, your goal is to go somewhere that you can help us even more, because then you'll be on the, the national level. So the two men here represent Hope Mills well, and the two men here have really made this year especially a good year for Hope Mills in that we're gonna finish projects that probably were nowhere near getting complete for maybe the next five to 10 years, depending on how funds were. So we appreciate you both, and thank you for coming tonight. And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the other elected officials, and I may miss someone, so if I do, I apologize. We just, we have the brand new chairman of the Cumberland County Commissioners, Commissioner Glenn Adams. He's in our audience. And I can't say enough about Commissioner Adams, in that he has been working from the sales tax distribution right on up to what we've been doing with proposals through our Tier One Committee. He's there when we call him, and he's there when we don't call him. He does a great job for us, so we appreciate you, Commissioner Adams, and congratulations on being chairman. We have the vice chair with us tonight, Tony Stewart. And Judge Tony King is with us. And is there anyone else elected here that, that, who else do I have?
Judge Gail Adams.
Judge Gail Adams. And you're hiding back there. Commissioner, Commissioner Adams is better half, huh? Right. Thank you for being with us this evening, and she too, a lot of times will be here and support us in our special events that we have, so we appreciate you being here this evening also. And again, we appreciate everyone coming tonight. This is a special time for us in that what we'll be doing is recognizing our two commissioners that will be coming off the board, and then all of us will come down, and what we'll be doing is doing our squaring in ceremony. The first commissioner that I would like to recognize is Commissioner Bellflowers. Commissioner Bellflowers worked very hard on our Lake Advisory Committee before he was elected to the board. He also has helped us with all sorts of projects that were his, his pet projects, and one of those, of course, was the walking trail at the golf course, which he continues to use. He's also been very involved with the military, because he is retired military. He served with Rulak. He's worked with our historical committee as a backup for Commissioner Legg, and he's been on, at several times, worked with the veterans, and he's worked with Hero's Homecoming. And of course, he's been an asset to us in that at Federal Tech, he has resources there that we've been able to share. So we will miss you, Commissioner Bellflowers. We are grateful appreciation of your public service as commissioner for the citizens of Hope Mills from 2017 to 2021.
That's the only two words that I can really say, because you blink your eye, and four years is, is gone, and a new board comes on. Just support the new board, and I have the confidence that the new board will do well, and I wish them well. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards and I were sworn in the same time, and I came on as mayor, she came on as commissioner. We had a rocky first couple of years. We, we really did, because we won't talk about Walmart. No, we won't talk about Walmart.
I remember that.
But since that time, not only have we built a strong relationship, but she's, she truly is an asset to the town of Hope Mills. She came with to us from being over and the director of the senior citizens when they had the, the building down on Davis Street. She met there every day. She was the, the guardian angel for so many of the seniors in Hope Mills. She's also been a part of the Mid-Carolina Council of Aging. She represents us there, and she's been very involved in our community in all sorts of roles. Most importantly, she has been an advocate for the senior citizens in any way she can. She's been my helpmate, she's been my confidant, she's been my sidekick for many times, and we've been, we've grown very close, because a lot of her interests are the same as mine. She loves Hope Mills. I can truly tell you that she loves Hope Mills. Her heart is here. She, you know, her family is living in Wilmington and other places. She stays here because she loves Hope Mills, and she will truly be missed on this board. She's the one that has the, the quietness and the calmness. She keeps everything under control, and she also cares and is concerned about everyone. I really will miss Commissioner Edwards, but I am not gonna miss her long, because we're gonna get her involved in some type of committee. We're gonna celebrate with her her next year of life, because you know, we had a birthday party this past week, and this lady, who doesn't look a day over, what, maybe 55 or 30, or who knows? This lady not only has served for 10 years, but this lady is 85 years old. So don't, so those of you that, those of you that want to say you just can't get up in the morning, you know, this aches or that aches, just look right over here, and she's a testament to, she'll walk with you, she'll, she stays up with all the best of us, and just know she will be missed, but we're gonna keep her active in Hope Mills in some form. So again, thank you, Commissioner Edwards, and she's been sitting on that same seat from 2011 to 2021. So thank you very much.
What Jessie said was a blink of an eye, but I had to do a lot of blinking to be here for, and I'm gonna miss it, I really am, but like the mayor said, I'm, I'm sure I'll be kept busy doing other things, and I will enjoy it. I hope to see all y'all out here. There's a lot of committees and, and commissions y'all could be on, if you love Hope Mills like I do. We need a lot of participation with the people that live in Hope Mills. And, gosh, again, I want to thank you, John Zoka and Kirk Deviere, for what all you've done for Hope Mills. And I want to also thank our new town manager, which I won't be able to work with him much, but I'll be able to talk to him. Want to thank all the staff. We have, Hope Mills has a fantastic staff. Y'all just don't know it. And it serves the police department and the fire department. I mean, I could go on. And I normally don't say anything, but anyway, thank you all so much.
And at this time, we will recess, and we'll all leave the podium here, and we'll start our swearing in, and through the swearing in process, we'll beg that you understand that it will take a little bit of time, but we're gonna try to share this with everyone that's here and anyone else who wants to join in. So at this time, we'll recess, and if you will, everyone. Go down there.
And that's a wrap.
Yeah, that's a wrap. Yeah, and you, yeah, and you can, you can take your name tag. You can keep your name tag. Your pretty own name tag.
Oh, come on, man, you got to adjust your seat.
I guess I got some.
You got to adjust your seat. Oh, you got, you got to, you got to adjust, you got to adjust your seat.
What's wrong with you?
I don't know, man. I've been sitting in it for four years.
I was only sitting last time.
I thought you were. I thought your first time you went out.
Yeah. And then my next one, you know, this one, I went in there, so.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, first time.
So.
Kevin Warner used to sit there.
Really?
to do is begin the swearing-in ceremony. And again, we appreciate everyone being here. Of course, the mayor gets to be sworn in first. So what I would like is, I will tell you that you can tell that you, when you've been here a while, because usually I have a very large extended family, but tonight, my, two of my granddaughters are at Village Christian Academy in a Christmas program, which means their mom and daddy are there. My daughter is in Little Rock, Arkansas. My oldest granddaughter is in Pinehurst in a cheerleading practice, and I've got another with gymnastics. So no one cared to schedule, you know? This was, so I appreciate the family that I have that's here tonight, my, really the family that came, but I also want you to know that I have a family that, for whatever reason, has been really my adopted family, and they have done so much for me, especially in this last four years that we've worked together. So I'd like to invite my husband to hold my Bible, my sister-in-law, my brother-in-law, my nephew, the Blevins, Ms. Moody, the Mowers, and anyone else that you, that put forth so much to get me where I am tonight. And also, something that I need to tell you is, you see this Bible? Come on up. You get, you get to come up here. Come on. I wanted to share with you that, a little bit about this. I always try to find something significant when I'm sworn in, just because I, I am not ashamed that I'm a Christian, and I'm not ashamed that I believe we need prayer in Town Hall. But I also want you to know that because I try to look for stuff, I have a very old house, and this Bible, that's worn and tattered, this Bible went through World War I. Mr. Mulder, Carling's daddy, was in World War I. He carried this in his backpack. And the neat thing about it was, when I opened it up, there's a couple of sheets in here. And the neat thing about these sheets is that they were both written in November, one in 1921 and one in 1922. And what he was letting, what he was letting them know that was, that he wrote at the top of this one because he'd come home from the war, and, and his dad died right after that, and he put on here that revenge, that forgiveness is the sweetest revenge. So he believed that of his trials over there in World War I, that you had to forgive. And I thought, when I found this Bible, and I found the fact that this was, it is a family Bible, but it, of course, it was also the significant thing about this, it was in World War I, it was also in World War II. It went back to World War II with Carling's husband. So just know, this is important, but it's also important tonight because being sworn in on something that is truly history. So thank you for being here. Representative Zoka is going to square me in. My husband's going to hold my Bible. Nadine Gilbert.
Okay. Nadine Gilbert is here with me also. She's a prayer warrior. And then, of course, you've got these people here that have adopted me as one of their own. All right. Okay.
All right. Raise your right hand, please. I, state your name.
I, Jackie Warner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As Hope Mills mayor, so help me God.
As Hope Mills mayor, so help me God.
Congratulations.
This is Colleen, this is my sister-in-law, Alex's sister, and Milton, and Mike. And you know something that's also interesting, I just give you a little tidbit? I was a Smith before I got married. Colleen married a Smith. So that both of them, both married Smiths, and we get confused all the time because people think Milton and I are brother and sisters. So thank you, thank you so much. And at this time, thank you for all for being here. Thank you very much. Appreciate your, appreciate all your hard work. Yeah. Let's get up there. Silence. Silence. All right, next, if you had a genuine notice that next, we would be swearing in Commissioner Legg, but we're going to jump over Commissioner Legg. We're waiting for his wife to get here. She had to get here from work, so we're going to call up Tracy Marley. And Tracy Marley is going to be swearing in, her husband Brian Marley. And his family. And the Marley family, come on up. You want a microphone, Tracy?
No, I'm loud.
Is your kid, is that right?
I just wanted to say right quick, introduce everybody. This is my wife Tracy. This is my sister, Mrs. Lynn. This is my father Ronnie Murray. This is my mother-in-law, Miss Peggy Peggy. I'm sorry, John. But anyway, I just wanted to say thank you for everybody that's supported me along the way. I even had a radio interview, and I told the gentleman that was him, you know, me. We talked about each load of the polls, and I told him, you know, I ain't ashamed of people that don't love them. You know, just, just come out and push, that's all that's going to make a difference in Hope Mills and have the community's voice heard. I didn't mention my mother. She passed seven years ago, but I wear a purple tonight, and I know that she's here with me. So that's, that's it. Keep caring.
I, state your name.
I, Brian Murray.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills commissioner.
As Hope Mills commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Next, we have Dr. Kim Watson to pray, and she'll be in California by Judge Sam King. And representatives of Dr. McPhee's family, if you'll come on down and join her.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming to this kind of event tonight, and I'd like to thank my family. I guess I better introduce all of them before I get in trouble. This is my husband Darren McPhee. This is my daughter Marley McPhee. My mother-in-law Hazel McPhee. My mother Patricia Gaines. My father Waverly Daniels. My uncle Clarence Daniels. My adopted brother Jermaine Todd, and my sister Patricia Gaines Black. This Bible does not have as much history as Mary Warren, but it is my maternal grandmother's Bible. She passed away 17 years ago. It is old and worn because she was a praying woman, and it has been used. And using it the last time I was sworn in, and I'm using it again tonight. So again, thank you, thank you to my big sister Judge King for swearing me in. And we have a remote domestic violence station in position here in the town of Hope Mills, and I've never been able to publicly thank Judge King, but she is the reason why we She brought it to my attention that we did not have a remote domestic violence violation here. Our citizens would have to travel to the court house to file a domestic violence order, and we also have a victim's advocate position. But again, Judge King brought it to my attention, connected me with the people of Raleigh, to present it to our board. So thank you, big sister Judge King, and thank you for swearing me in.
At this time, I'd like to call Commissioner Legg to come forward with his family, his wife is here now, his daughters. Please, Lord, just come on up, Commissioner Legg.
How many total years have you served?
Commissioner Legg has been a commissioner often on for a grand total of 22 years. So he's serviced well, and he's going to service again. And it's my honor tonight to be able to swear Commissioner Legg in. He asked me to do this for him, and it's my honor, sir. I didn't mean to do it for two. Do solemnly swear. That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And maintain the Constitution.
And maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So you can take your seats. Next, we have Commissioner Legg, Joanne Scorola, and, uh, our town clerk, Jane Starling, is just ready.
Um, yes. Uh, I'd like to thank everyone that voted for me. I'm really excited to, you know, do good things for Hope Mills. My boyfriend couldn't be here tonight, he's recovering from a traumatic brain injury, and the rest of my family is in New York, so I'm still voting. So, thanks everyone for being here.
I, Joanne Scorola.
I, Joanne Scorola.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
As Hope Mills Commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is your new Town Board of Hope Mills. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we'll start the organizational part of our meeting. Our, we will, uh, the first order of business, as, as we call this first meeting to order, or back to order, uh, would be the election of the mayor pro tem. I need to recognize at this time, Commissioner Marley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we appoint, uh, Ms. McCreary as mayor pro tem.
Okay. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. If you would, at this time, Dr. McCreary, if you would go down, uh, and, uh, Judge King is gonna come back and swear, uh, Dr. McCreary in as our new, not new, our returning mayor pro tem.
Double honors, Mayor. Thank you. You will repeat after me. Aye, Dr. Kim Watson McCreary.
Aye, Dr. Kim Watson McCreary.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As Hope Mills Mayor pro tem.
As Hope Mills Mayor pro tem.
So help me God.
So help me, uh.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we do not have any public hearings. We do have a consent agenda, and there are on that consent agenda, so that you'll know the organizational pieces of this would be that we have a resolution setting the meeting calendar for the calendar year 2022. And that, uh, is, uh, available, and will be on our, our town website. We also have, uh, we're going, consideration of reapproving our existing board rules of procedure. This board will be traveling to Wilmington, January thirteenth and fourteenth, to go to the, uh, North Carolina League of Municipalities Ethics Training. At that time, they'll review, uh, the rules of procedure, but we're adopting the existing rules of procedure as we move forward. We're also gonna authorize tonight, on this congen, uh, consent agenda, the continuation of the committee prime movers. This was added as a, a special committee this past year. We'll, uh, continue that committee this coming year, and that committee has already started with, uh, people, uh, requesting to be a volunteer. We also have appointments of the, the board liaison committees, and we also have the appointment of commissioners to ex officio seats. And those that were, uh, again, uh, in this consent agenda, so that we, for sake of time, and because this is formalities. At this time, do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Consent agenda is written.
I have a motion to approve, I have a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. At this time, we have no old business, we have no new business. Uh, we do have a board meeting coming up December the twentieth, and it has a lot of information in it, so that, that will be a meeting that will break in this new board with, uh, uh, public hearings and, and all sorts of, uh, information, that they'll have to learn quickly about what this seat means for them, uh, coming December twentieth. Uh, we do have, is there any additions to our manager's report? Okay. Anything that we have from our attorney?
Congratulations to the board.
Thank you. Any other staff comments?
Uh, just that I'm still accepting applications for, um, committees and positions. If anyone's interested, I can give you a application or expendable on the county's website.
And, and do want to, uh, one special comment is that we had a wonderful Christmas in Hope Mills this past weekend. We had beautiful weather, we had our Festival of Lights at the lake, we had, uh, the, the Episcopal Church open for touring. It is beautiful on the inside. We had our breakfast with Santa, sold out two separate times, and then we had our Christmas parade that was not only well attended, but it was flawless. Our staff, Parks and Rec staff, our public safety, public works, everybody did a great job. So I just want you to know that, uh, it's so exciting, that our traditions are back in Hope Mills, and that we could have this special family time. Uh, and just know that the Festival of Lights at the lake, we had singing, we had activities for the children, Santa came in on a boat, and it was just, again, Christmas is back. Any other comments? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn? And at the adjournment, we do have some special refreshments, and we ask that you stay and, and mingle and, and get to, um, take time to meet with our new commissioners. So have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you for coming this evening, and thank you for being a part of this special celebration.